Committee briefings? Or small area planning, who's doing that? Okay, I think I skipped to briefings too fast. We have a briefing. Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. Matt Dugan, Planning and Zoning Department. I got a briefing on the future of small area planning, just similar to a briefing Stevie Greathouse presented to you all earlier this year. So to go over this, I'm going to go over the background and charge for the overall effort to envision small area planning, provide an overview of our recommendation, talk a little bit about the two areas in which we'd like to pilot test this new Imagine Austin corridor planning process, and then close by, provide some remarks related to the relationship between small area planning process and the land development code, and how this whole effort relates to the legacy of our existing neighborhood plans. So here's a very simplified version of our studies policy framework. We've got the charter required Imagine Austin comprehensive plan and comprehensive planning program, then under that, small area plans, which include neighborhood plans, corridor plans, stationary plans, and master plans, as well as citywide master plans, and then below that, we actually have the implementation, how to move those plans forward with how the city spends money, how the city regulates development, and then partnerships. So small area plans have traditionally served a variety of purposes, and we anticipate that future small area plans will continue to serve many of these purposes, including supporting creation of complete communities, providing a plan for growth in a particular area, giving the community a voice in the future evolution of particular areas of the city, providing greater predictability for development investments, and overall change. We've got kind of the difference between planning and implementation. It's usually a smaller plans typically include a vision, policies that guide decision-making, recommended actions, and then a future land use map or other maps. And then implementation is done through capital investments, regulations, programs, or partnerships. So in the late 90s, the City of Austin embarked on a neighborhood planning program, which has led to the creation of 30 neighborhood plans or combined neighborhood plans. Over about the last decade, the city has also adopted eight specialized urban design plans, including master plans, stationary plans, and the East Riverside Corridor Plan. June 2012, City adopted the Imagine Austin comprehensive plan. And then three Planning and Zoning Departments, small area plans have been adopted since approval of Imagine Austin. A 2016 audit of neighborhood planning found several significant deficiencies in the neighborhood planning process. And while there's been a robust discussion around the findings of the neighborhood planning audit, one thing is clear, it's time for a new approach to small area planning that better meshes with the vision of Imagine Austin and is more inclusive and sustainable over time. In September of 2017, Council provided additional direction, charged us with identifying a new approach to small area planning, to identify and prioritize geographic areas for small area planning along corridors that align with Imagine Austin and leverage city investments in transportation, housing, and other infrastructure. So over the last year, we've done a number of things, additional analysis, survey stakeholders, discussions with city staff, distributed our recommendation memo to Planning Commission, zoning planning commission, and city council in May. They've had ongoing dialogue with boards, commissions, and council, and we're currently developing initial existing conditions data and scoping material related to the year-one work program. This is some of the analysis we went through, wide variety of data sets. We built a prototype of a complete community assessment tool that was included in the packet, and we used that to prioritize particular areas for planning. We've also conducted preliminary geographic analysis along Imagine Austin centers and corridors in order to identify a possible year-one work program, and we're continuing to refine a robust scoring system that will allow us to prioritize additional centers and corridors for future planning services. There's some outreach in the spring, had an online survey of existing stakeholders, which is available in English and Spanish, was sent out to organizations, all the organizations that can be registered, as well as throughout other channels. Some of the key input we got, over 40% of respondents indicated that convenient meeting times and locations would make them more likely to participate, but even more respondents indicated that they wanted assurance that recommendations will be implemented. About six to 12 months seemed to be a sweet spot for the length of a public process, and willingness to continue to participate dropped off after 12 months. Most people prefer to participate through online surveys, and then when asked what they most wanted to see in public meetings, 67% indicated background information made available prior to the meeting was important. So these results from the survey helped us, as we continue to flesh out the public engagement process for our future small area plans. So the memo that we sent out in May lists a series of recommendations for our future small area planning process. I'll touch on a few of those. The primary recommendations, the first is that we provide a spectrum of planning services moving forward, and the spectrum includes three primary product lines. The first is the Imagine Austin Centers and Corridors Plans, and these will be full-service plans along the centers and corridors. They 'd be prioritized based on the ability to leverage mobility investments and other investments. And these plans will typically include a future land use map and be adopted as attachments to the comprehensive plan. The second is our complete community plans, and these will be focused on immediate interventions and investments to support the creation of places where residents can meet all their basic daily needs. These plans would be prioritized based on a citywide complete community analysis, and they would be more limited in scope than the center and corridor plans, and would probably not be adopted as attachments to Imagine Austin. And then the third product line was the special studies and planning category. These include citywide plans and special purpose area planning that can be customized to a particular need. Existing neighborhoods, neighborhood plans stay in place, but would typically no longer be a product line that we would routinely provide moving forward. So we anticipate that we need to complete approximately 50 to 100 plans in order to adequately plan for all the Imagine Austin centers and corridors. Based on direction from the council resolution, we recommend focusing initially on particular corridors that leverage the anticipated mobility investments. The map in the slide indicates that all the designated Imagine Austin centers and corridors in yellow, the location of the 2016 mobility bond investments in blue dotted lines, and the location of draft Project Connect High Capacity Transit corridors in red. Well, not every corridor would need a plan, probably around 10 plans would be needed to be developed in the short term to adequately leverage the anticipated investments under the 2016 Mobility Bond and Cap Metro Project Connect. We anticipate that each of the centers and corridors plan would take anywhere from 12 to 18 months to complete, so we could probably do about one to two plans per year. Looking at year one, based on preliminary geographic analysis, we've identified two possible corridors that we could begin pilot testing the new corridor planning process. These would be North Lamar, Techrisse 183, and South Wazim Valley, East Riverside to William Cannon. Both corridors are designated Imagine Austin activity corridors, and have also been identified for investment under the 2016 Mobility Bond, as well as Project Connect. Both corridors have land use entitlement and other characteristics which we believe can allow them to benefit from corridor-based small area planning, and moving forward, these corridors would also provide geographic balance and provide two fairly distinct settings in which to try out the new small area planning process. So the regulations and land development code, through zoning is a key method by which small area plans are implemented. Depending on what is ultimately recommended by the city manager related to a future revision of the land development code and the anticipated timing of those revisions, this implementation can occur in one of several ways for future small area plans. The first option would be something we did for North Shoal Creek, where we did the policy plan, had the future land use map that guides future zoning decisions, but leaves the existing zoning in place. Second option would be to develop a policy plan, a development of a regulating plan or an overlay zone, which would create a unique set of standards in the area. An example, that would be Uno or the East Riverside Corridor Plan. And then a third option would be to develop a policy plan and select rezoning through rezoning ordinance. Example, that would be neighborhood plans prior to the adoption of Imagine Austin. So our neighborhood planning legacy, the existing neighborhood plans, contact teams, neighborhood plan combining districts, and land development code provisions stay in place. We'd be shifting to the new, three new planning product lines, the Imagine Austin Centers and Corridors Plans, the Complete Community Plans, or the Special Studies. Council 's to direct us to update or create new neighborhood plans if needed, and then the October 17th memo included a detailed set of responses to questions related to the legacy of existing neighborhood plans.
Thank you, Matt. Questions, comments? Commissioner McGraw?
Well, I'm definitely somebody who wanted to get into this, and I think what's really what's of great concern to me is that it, I'm wondering, looking at the resolution by council back in December, or in September of last year, and I don't see that it says, "Give us some new planning products," I think is what you're calling them, because we don't want to do neighborhood planning anymore. And I see neighborhood planning is going away, but I think staff just decided that, and I don't understand where we are with the council on neighborhood planning. Because they did not say in this resolution to eliminate it. They said, "Do some new things," but they didn't say eliminate it. So maybe you can explain to me all of the neighborhoods that are not already planned as neighborhoods are going to, it looks like on the map they're going to have corridors planned, but not the neighborhoods. So I'm just trying to understand why we're stopping neighborhood planning and what we intend to do about the areas that lie outside of the area that's been planned.
Okay, so I think those questions were addressed in the October 17th memo and the November 30th memo. But going back to the council resolution, and maybe that's a bit of a question for council to answer, but based on that resolution, it was saying, "Hey, go focus your planning efforts along the corridors where there's bond investments, where there's affordable housing investments, where there's other investments."
The council said that?
That's the resolution.
Well, it was to support... Right, but they didn't say, "Get rid of neighborhood planning."
Nobody's saying that.
Well, that's where we are, though, now. You said that at the MITAI, and you said it tonight. We don't intend to go forward with neighborhood planning. So what I'm trying to understand is, if we don't do neighborhood planning, and we're only going to do corridors and centers, what about those neighborhoods that never got a plan that lie outside the neighborhood planning area? What happens to those areas? How are they involved in any planning?
Sure. So what I said is, for existing neighborhood plans, the contact teams, any of the land development code provisions related to neighborhood plans, those all stay in place. None of that changes.
They can be changed. I understand that. That's what Code Next said, that's...
No, none of that changes, is what I'm saying.
It can be changed, though. They can be changed. I understand that.
What I did say is, moving forward, we're going to do, we're going to focus on three new planning products, the centers and corridors plans, the complete community plans, the special studies plans, but the typical neighborhood plan, that will not be a product line that we move forward.
What do we do with those places that people live in that are outside of the neighborhood plan area? What happens to those areas?
So yes, that was one of the many things that the audit identified, is that our neighborhood plans were not feasible, they were not equitable, they were not representative. So the areas outside of the central core were not receiving planning services.
Okay, so you're saying outside of the core, people are not receiving planning services. So how would they receive planning services under what's being proposed for small area planning?
By doing centers and corridors plans in those areas.
What about neighborhoods, places where the people live?
So based on the council direction, it's to focus our planning efforts along the corridors where the city's making capital investments through the mobility bond.
Okay, so the people who live in the neighborhoods have made their investments in their neighborhoods. Are they not part of this anymore?
I mean, everybody would be a part of it.
Okay. I'm not getting anywhere. Sorry.
So Matt, could you go back a couple of slides where you had... I think there was one where you said, "If council directed you to either create or modify neighborhood plans," let's go to that one, "update or create neighborhood plans if directed," right?
Right.
So let me see if I can phrase it differently. So we have a council resolution. Staff's understanding is, they want you to focus the planning efforts on the areas that we have that we have decided to improve, infrastructure and so on.
Yes.
Right? And so you've come up with these three lines, three products for planning, but if council in the future decides to direct you to create neighborhood plans, that that's what you guys will do. But that's not your focus right now, based on that resolution?
Correct.
I don't know if that helps at all.
Well, it seems to me that council passed a resolution in 1997 saying, "We're going to do neighborhood planning," which we've been doing all this time, but they never passed a resolution saying, "Stop neighborhood planning." Staff has made that determination, as far as I can tell. And what I'm trying to understand is, let's say that people live in a place that's yellow on this map and not blue, meaning they don't have a neighborhood plan. What is a complete community plan, something like that? I mean, I don't know what that is. Is that supposed to be the new term for neighborhood plan, or what? You know?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in. Good evening. Stevie Greathouse, Planning and Zoning, and I think this map is a good jump-in point. This map basically represents the direction that staff was given in 19, about 1997 to go off and begin doing neighborhood plans. We have, at this point, completed neighborhood plans for all of the areas shown in dark blue on this map. We have offered neighborhood planning and had a process suspended in the areas shown in bright yellow on this map, and then in the two areas shown in brown, which are the Allendale and Rosedale neighborhoods. Allendale was offered the opportunity to do planning and declined. Rosedale is the only kind of area left in the original 1997 council direction to do planning that we have received any direction about. Subsequent to that time, councils obviously approved a resolution directing us to provide resources for corridors and centers planning, and we had an audit of neighborhood planning that was adopted in 2016 that determined that based on the resources heretofore, moving forward, the auditor didn't think that neighborhood planning was something that we could continue to sustain with resources and provide that level of service to the entire city. So part of the purpose of pivoting and providing these corridor planning services that I think is also was implicit in council's direction under the resolution is really to prioritize and focus our resources in the areas that need those planning resources the most, to kind of deal with emerging areas of change and areas that may need to address those changes moving forward. To kind of tackle the last question about complete communities plans, those planning services could absolutely be provided in an area that is not adjacent to a corridor, not in a center, but they would probably not be structured in the same way or have the same kind of content and format that neighborhood plans past had. Hope that helps.
I think that gets us closer. Could you comment some more about how they're different? How the complete communities are different from the neighborhood plans? Either the process or the structure or the format?
Sure. So I think, as Matt mentioned in his presentation, the complete communities plans would be much lighter, more focused interventions, a lot more focused on actually implementing actions and CIP investments and tactical investments in a particular location. They probably would not have a future land use map, as an example, and they probably would not be policy documents that would be adopted as part of Imagine Austin. They would be much more kind of tactical and focused on making specific implementation actions in a particular location to solve a particular issue.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Anderson?
Thanks for being here tonight, y'all. So I can't help but to thank every time I look over these that they are completely unsustainable, and it's good to hear you guys talk about that. When we show a slide that we need the 50 to 100 plans, but yet we can create one to two of these per year, and that doesn't even hit on the fact that some of our plans are about to hit 20 years old, you know? So in 1997, when we passed this, Austin's population was roughly half of what it is today, and our needs have changed immensely. So I'm, I think Austin is desperate for, you know, just totally new direction, new leadership, a new way of doing all these things. So what are the next steps? So it's obvious that these are complete failure at this point. So how do we make these, you know, if we keep going down this path, these are going to be tools of displacement. I mean, they're exclusionary zoning in their finest. And so how do we get away from that and get new ways of doing planning where we can do these faster and allow for a lot more housing where we need it, and let, you know, different things like Project Connect guide us? Like, how are we gonna, you know, what's the plan? What are we gonna do? Are we stuck? Are we just waiting to see what happens with city manager?
I mean, some stuff, I think, seems like it's on pause with the, we'll have a new Assistant City Manager, we'll have a new process to regard to land development code early next year. But we're fired up about moving in a new direction, and I think there's already a lot of stuff that's already happened that's council direction to go say, you know, "Hey, go do this stuff." We've got the bond investments, we've got the stuff from Project Connect, the housing blueprint, they're going to come out with targets for these corridors. Capital Metro has their service guidelines of what actually takes for the number of people per acre, the number of employees per acre to support high capacity transit, so trying to hit those numbers. Transportation Department's working on their strategic mobility plan, which I understand is going to come up with cross-sections and map those cross-sections to corridors. So a lot of the stuff, there'll be a lot of, there's already a lot of policy guidance we have from council that's a really great starting point to try and move the needle onto our biggest issues, which is housing and transportation.
I know it's hard to do anything with the current land development code, but hopefully over the next 12 months, we're taking care of that, too. So thank you for this, and thank you for reminding us how completely broken this process is.
Commissioner Seeger, then Commissioner Shaw?
My question is about, so many of the corridor plans are in the central core where we have neighborhood plans. What is the interface going to be between the corridor plan and an adopted neighborhood plan, say where they have a flum, et cetera? What is going to be the transition, or is there going to be a transition? I'm sure there is.
Sure. So we've got one case from East Riverside Corridor Plan where there was that situation. So a lot of things we could learn from that. But I think as part of the pilot task for doing the corridors, you know, we'd really look to flesh that out and figure out what exactly, how would that exactly work? Because if we look at North Lamar, part of that area, a line at corridor, already has an existing neighborhood plan, and part of it doesn't.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw, then Commissioner Hart, then Schneider.
So does this proposal for the new approach for small area planning have to be approved by council at some point, or have you, do they need to review and approve this, these products?
So what we're proposing is that we would basically be bringing to council, as we have in our past neighborhood planning efforts, any kind of resolution to initiate a particular planning process. So before we move forward with the pilot program to do planning in a particular corridor, that would likely be moving forward to council with a resolution to initiate that planning effort, which is similar to how we've handled neighborhood plan and other corridor plan initiation in the past.
And my other question is, I'm trying to, at the pace at which we're going to be able to accomplish these plans, I mean, I think we're going to be looking at another stab at getting a new land development code here in a few months. We don't know what the pace of that will be, but by the time, I mean, so we're going to have new zoning, new maps, and we're going to give a lot of thought to what these corridors should look like, transition zones. I'm sure we're going to have all those discussions. And then this comes in later. I'm just trying, it just seems like it's a little too late. By the time we do some of this, we're already with the new code, and we've already given all the thought to what these corridors should look like, or is, anyway, I'm just not, I'm thinking it may be too late by the time we implement all these corridor plans.
Well, I think with the pilot program particularly, we're hoping that we'll know, at least have some sense of what the toolbox might look like, and if not, knowing the toolbox, knowing what the process to get there is. So in that sense, I don't think it's too late at all. I think it's, it will be good to have the toolbox decided upon as we're moving forward to apply and create a policy plan.
So you think we might be able to use that in developing the land code, or the kind of a mapping strategy, or is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm kind of saying, it's sort of a circle. I'm thinking about it the other way around, where it is nice to be able, even if these plans should have a regulatory element to it, it will be nice to know what toolbox we're working from. So as Matt mentioned on one of the slides in the presentation, that we have several different ways that we could implement planning with regulations. We hope to know sort of where the process to develop revisions to the land development code is headed, so that we can recommend the right set of tools as part of this process and how to go about implementing with regulations.
I would just add, I haven't done this at other places, you know, best practice is, you do a comprehensive plan, or you update your comprehensive plan, then you do your, you update your zoning code, then implement your comprehensive plan, and then you also align your CIP investments with your comprehensive plan.
So if I could expand on that, just on that question, because it's going to be important for us to know if we're going to be tackling another mapping exercise. We were almost mapping the corridors, maybe a light version of the mapping. So it would be important for us to know our role and know where to stop planning to allow these future corridor plans to take their course, because either we're getting too far ahead or you're getting too far behind. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Are you envisioning us not doing what we did a few months ago?
That I'm not sure of. Well, I can't leave the passive Austin's planning processes. Seems like we've kind of, we've jammed planning and implementation together. A lot of times we have the policy discussion, as well as the implementation discussion at the same time. And theoretically, you know, on paper, it's, you know, policy and planning is done with the community, and then implementation is technical and really done with staff. But in Austin, we do it. We have the discussion on policy and implementation at the same time, every time, it seems like. So I think one of the things we're trying to do is kind of, you know, separate the planning from the implementation. So, you know, the most recent example would be North Shoal Creek, went through the planning process, came up with a future land use map, but did not do the zoning that goes along with that.
Yeah, and I think that the other thing that I would add is, we don't necessarily have the luxury of waiting, and I think I've said this before, probably in this room, we don't have the luxury of waiting until we have the perfect policy framework to develop an implementation strategy for it. So I think it's a continuous process where you are continuously trying to make sure that, how you are implementing your policies with regulations and CIP investments, are doing the best job they can to implement the current policy framework, while you're continuing to revise that policy framework over time to make it make more sense. So I don't think it's, we're not going to be able to wait for an entire new set of policy framework to come into existence before deciding how to implement.
Yeah, no, that's fair. I think we're going to have to have a discussion about, what is our role? Are we going to be doing some planning during the revision of the land development code? And I'm not clear about it yet. Commissioner Hart?
I was going to echo a lot of Commissioner Anderson's statements, and thank you for being here. And I think bringing up the North Shoal Creek plan that was here very recently exemplifies some of the issues that we have today, where there's this very long, drawn-out, engaged, thoughtful process that still results in a final product that seem to have a lot of discord between direction from staff, expectations of the neighborhood, and then expectations of what everything should have looked like from up on the dais. So I'm curious to see how the new process shakes out. Do you have any current prioritization on the corridor mapping?
So we built a, what we call, more of a prototype of a prototype to test with, and we called it a complete community assessment tool. It was very simple. We measured four things, kind of the distance to elementary school, grocery store, park, and high-frequency transit stop. And the city, we divided the city up, and I think there were 17 districts in the city, and then another seven outside of the city limits. So that very basic, very rough prototype that kind of showed us areas that we thought might need a little more, a little more attention.
So areas that are highly incomplete, or?
Yes, yeah. And then we can kind of look at areas that had center corridor, areas that were getting bond investments, and areas that already had planned for high existing, high-frequency transit.
And how would you say that the general public can be involved with shaping the new process at this point? Is it feedback to their council members, feedback to you guys?
I think it's going to be that, but it's also going to be feedback during the process, because we really are wanting to make sure that sort of whatever first corridor plan we hit start on in the new year is going to be a pilot process, with the notion that we probably won't do, well, maybe it'll be perfect, you know, who knows? Maybe we'll get, we'll hit it out of the park from the get-go, and that'll... get, we'll hit it out of the park from the get-go, and that'll be the process we repeat, you know, from now on. But probably not. So the notion of having folks as engaged as possible in that process, so that we can kind of ask questions of ourselves and of the folks that have engaged in that process as we go, and suggest changes and improvements to how we do the next of the corridor plans that we take on.
I'm sorry if I missed this. Do you have that prototype identified and a timeline around it?
So at this point, we're looking, probably we'll be seeking some sort of council action in the springtime to initiate a possible year-one pilot in the North Lamar Corridor.
Okay. Thank you both.
Commissioner Schreiner, then Shaw?
Hi. I noticed that you did some study on the best ways or what people would, how people would engage in these processes. And I really appreciate that. I also noticed that the survey respondents were really heavily weighted for the people who were always deeply engaged in these processes. And I wondered if you had any thoughts about how we can make sure that as we're doing these, we get a more 360 view, or, you know, we make sure that we're hearing from the people who don't regularly go to their neighborhood association meeting, or, you know, are not super engaged?
Sure. The preliminary survey that you referenced in the packet was really kind of designed to gauge feedback specifically from those folks that know what the planning process is already and have some particular feedback based on their own lessons learned experiencing that process. But moving forward with engagement in the corridor plans and in the other planning products, we would definitely be looking to do a more expansive engagement process that's probably a little bit closer to the type of process that was done during development of Imagine Austin Comprehensive Plan, where we work to engage broadly, try to reach out to underrepresented groups, try to keep track of the extent to which we're being successful in engaging and listening to and seeking out input from folks that aren't kind of traditional frequent flyers of our planning process, if you will. And I think that the North Lamar Corridor, and actually all of the corridors on that map, because they have existing high-capacity transit routes already serving them, will kind of, you know, there's some sort of built-in engagement that can be done to engage riders that are experiencing, you know, that route. We've had some preliminary conversations with Austin Public Health about the amount of activity they're already out every day doing in terms of assessments and being able to be in contact with some of the vulnerable populations that wouldn't otherwise get involved in a planning process. So I think we're gonna be a lot more kind of creative and nimble in how we approach stakeholders and sort of what our definition of stakeholder is for the process, which does, which is not to say that we won't continue to engage the traditional stakeholders, just that we'll have a whole additional kind of layer on top of that of additional stakeholders.
I really appreciate that. And obviously, you know, it's really complicated, especially when you're talking about corridors built around transit. You're gonna want to engage people who, or maybe renters, or who rely, you want to oversample people who are relying on transit. And I'm not sure that those voices are typically included. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
I think, Matt, I think I heard you say this a lot, we're gonna have a lot of metrics from these policies, Strategic Housing Blueprint, the Mobility Plan. There's gonna be a lot of goals set that will inform what you guys do in these corridors, but I think to your, what we were discussing earlier, that'll also inform how we approach any work we do, because those will be our, kind of our goals for whatever affordable housing goals are in each district. We'll try to be achieving those as we move through the new development code process. So I think we'll be playing by the same set of goals, is what I'm trying to say. So that's a good thing.
Commissioner McGraw?
So a couple of things. I have to disagree with my colleague. Neighborhood planning, in my opinion, is not a failure. Thousands of people have participated. And I'm, one of the things that has come from those plans is that every plan has a lot of information. It's almost, I think this last one that we saw was just a tremendous plan. It was wonderfully done. But I think a neighborhood plan could actually be done a little slimmer, you know? I think it had a lot of information. But I also know that all the neighborhood plans are used to inform the CIP process, and that is not a failure. I think that has been a tremendous asset to really let the local people say, you know, where do we really need sidewalks and bikeways and things like that, and where do we have flooding? And so I think the neighborhood plans have been a tremendous asset. And I'm sorry that, that other neighborhoods will, I suppose, will no longer get neighborhood plans, since staff has decided not to do them. It appears to me that we've had funds for neighborhood planning all these years, and every year or so, the council has approved the next plan. Is that right? The council decides what are the plans that are coming up. And it sounds like now staff is saying, no, we want that money for corridor plans. We don't want any more neighborhood plans. We want to go to council and say, we want corridor plans, and we're taking those resources over here to corridor plans, which I understand from neighborhood housing is where we go, reach into the neighborhoods, quarter to maybe a half a mile, which will take out a lot of neighborhoods, and decide what's gonna happen to them via a corridor plan. So that's, that's how I'm understanding this change. So is that right with the money, that the resources are, the neighborhood planning resources now will become these planning resources?
I think I would kind of respond that our budget currently, when council adopts an operating budget for our department, specifies resources per division of our department, and one of those divisions is the small area, or the long-range, long-range planning division? Its name keeps changing. But one of those divisions that has traditionally been responsible for neighborhood plans is the long-range planning division. However, the neighborhood plans have not typically been developed with consultant resources, so that's not, an individual neighborhood plan is not usually a line item in the budget that council adopts for our department. They're adopting funding for a particular amount of FTE that do the work that is directed by council through a resolution or other action or development, or directed by city manager. We haven't had specific amounts of money targeted to particular neighborhood planning efforts.
But the council does say, these are the next neighborhoods to receive planning. Isn't that still the way that's been done?
They have initiated them through resolutions. So for example, the North Shoal Creek Plan, which was the last of the neighborhood plans that we have adopted, was initiated by resolution several years ago, and that resolution would initiated both the North Shoal Creek Neighborhood Plan, as well as some planning work that was undertaken in the Burnett Road Corridor. But it hasn't been like a rolling annual work program of plans. It's really been on a plan-by-plan basis, working down that map that was originally kind of enshrined in 1997, providing direction to staff to go take on the next plan.
Right. But that's been by council resolution. So in the coming year, the intention is, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get the council to decide what neighborhood plans. We're going to get the council to decide we're doing corridor plans. That's my, my understanding, is that it's kind of the same division, the same pot of money. Our resources are now going to go to corridor plans if the council approves that. Is that correct?
I think what I heard you say is, is that council approves so many FTEs for your department, and the different pieces of the department, and that the planning efforts are directed by council. So in this case, you have the resolution that directs you to do the three different, or to come up with a different way of, of planning areas that are being invested in. And so it's not that councils has, when they're approving the budget, that the next thing we're gonna do is these two neighborhoods. Right?
Correct. But they, they don't do it during the budget, but they do it at some point.
Right. But the last time they did it was for the Burnett, which was a while ago. And they haven't done another one?
Yes.
Okay. So when, when you take the pilot to council in, in early spring, what's on, what's on the table? Can they say, well, you know, we're not sure about these three product tools. We also want you to do neighborhood plans?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they can, they can do whatever they want.
Or all that's being presented is, this is what we heard from your resolution, and here's the pilot that we want you to consider, and we're recommending it. That's more likely...
That we would recommend initiating a pilot corridor plan. And that doesn't necessarily foreclose upon that being the planning solution for all time, because council could just as easily the next month take action directing us to develop a new neighborhood plan, or to go back and offer a neighborhood plan to one of the areas within that map. I mean, that would definitely, that's council's decision to make, for sure.
Yeah. I mean, I think we could have, continue having these discussions and, and reach out to our council members, too.
Right. I, I, one more thing I just wanted to mention, because you started talking about Code Next. And I think one of the things that really hurt Code Next effort was, because originally, it was a rewrite of the code, which is the toolbox, which tells you what kind of districts you have. And we needed some new districts, and that was understood. But a couple of years into the process, the council added the money to do the mapping simultaneously with the plan, which is really strange, in my opinion, that you would rewrite, you know, recreate the toolbox, but you're, you're mapping it all at the same time. And I think that really caused a lot of trouble. So when you say, we were, we were planning the corridors, we were doing the transition zones, what I'm, I think maybe I'm understanding is that the attitude here is, we would get a new toolbox, or some changes to the toolbox, but the mapping, rather than happening right alongside, which made us, I don't know, I thought I was crazy trying to deal with that. But it seems to me to be more rational if then that toolbox is used to implement planning. And the planning is what you're talking to us about, is to doing the planning. So is your intention somewhat to see the toolbox tuned up and the application in the planning work, rather than both of those simultaneously?
I don't think either of us are prepared to speculate on what is or isn't gonna be the recommendation for the new process to rewrite the land development code. So I don't, I don't know that I have enough information to actually answer that question.
I'm just wondering if that isn't a more reasonable, functional way to approach things. Because it sounds like y'all are a little baffled, too, about, well, we've gotta keep going with planning, but we don't know what the toolbox is.
No. And I want to actually clarify that what we are waiting to know about is sort of what the overall approach and timeframe might be, because that will help inform what we recommend for a planning product. So as an example, when we undertook the North Shoal Creek Plan and made a, made a calculated decision to do just a future land use map and not try to do any kind of remapping of the zoning as a corollary to that planning process, that was specifically because we anticipated that we would have a rewrite of the code and a remapping of the code within a quick enough timeframe that it didn't make sense to go through the process of re, rezoning that whole area, only to redo it through a citywide effort. So it's going to continue to be a dance, and it will continue to be us being aware of what that overall rewrite schedule, timeframe, timeline process looks like. But I don't think anything that we've recommended couldn't dance in whatever way it needs to in order to make sense with what that recommended process ultimately is.
Commissioner McGraw?
So, Matt, how do you envision this process happening? Are you having stakeholder meetings and try to solicit stakeholder input for, for corridor plans or small area plans? Or you, how do you see that happening?
Sure. And we haven't got that far along, but I think what we're gonna do is, kind of step one is come up with a public participation plan. That's something we did in Imagine Austin really helped with, with that process. But have that public participation plan kind of go through and identify the stakeholders, identify the process, you kind of scope the process. And one of the things we've seen in some, in some other cities is using different outreach and engagement techniques for different stakeholders that seem to be better suited for their, their needs. But we haven't, we haven't gotten that far yet.
So I guess where I'm going with this is, you know, I, at some point, you know, we, we're in the, in the circumstance of crying wolf. I mean, we, people have, you know, spent a lot of sweat and blood and energy on neighborhood plans over 20 years, using more or less that same methodology, you know? And 20 years down the road, all of a sudden, we say, well, never mind, let's start over with something else. And, you know, and, and all I'm, all I'm saying is, in addition to the, to the incredibly optimistic timeframe that you've got, I mean, you're looking out 25 and 50 years on this, you know, I, I, I can't help but think, again, that some future commissioner will say, well, look what they've done, and why have they done it this way? And, and, you know, this is totally messed up, and let's just start over. And it will happen. I mean, it's inevitable that it will happen. And so the point I wanted to make, frankly, is that, you know, the charrettes that we went through on the mapping were profoundly instructive. And if you were to do anything, it seems to me that, that this should be a triage almost simultaneously all at once, rather than a protracted process over 20 years. An excellent opportunity to engage the community, but, but really, you know, really, the city won't wait. So, you know, actions need to be taken as quickly as they can be choreographed. And I just, I'm just astonished that we'd be looking at something that would be as methodical and rote, and, and not forward, not as forward-looking methodologically as we could be if we can get in, if we can get in and do it. That's my thought. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Sure. I know, we're hoping to wrap up. So I'll be the one that says that, yeah, I mean, this is obviously so broken, and we don't have 50 years to get through these. And unless we're going to send eviction notices to the bottom three quarters of our income earners in Austin, which is kind of the trajectory we're on without real change and real leadership. So there's no way other cities that are growing deal with what we're dealing with, as far as like coming up with such an arcane process where nobody's allowed housing where they want to live, and we make housing so inefficient and impossible that it doesn't really happen like it needs to. So just really challenging you guys to quickly come up with whatever looks like. We've talked about maybe a citywide flum, or we can just go in at one time and kind of just update the entire city and allow for responsible land development, once again, just trying to get there. But understanding that cities change and evolve and not being afraid of it is a good thing. Thanks.
Any other comments? Thanks so much.
Thank you.
The Small Area Planning Report that the staff did was sent to us May 14. And I just wanted to reiterate that we were right in the very middle of Code Next. Y'all remember how many hours we met? And it came to us as an email that said, oh, here's a Small Area Planning Report. We had no briefing or anything. So this is one reason I was very confused about all this. And so I really appreciate having some more time to talk to staff and having y'all come back and, and really enlighten us a little bit more on this process. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd say, thanks for sharing the communication, Commissioner McGraw, because that was helpful for me to just see kind of what's transpired in the last hour or long.
So can I, I thought, unless I was imagining, didn't you guys present to us in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
We did have a presentation. And it was very close to what we saw today. So you did present on this previously, right? Okay, thank you.
I think the thing that got me really lost was that I couldn't find neighborhood planning anywhere, and it didn't seem to be overtly, we are now getting rid of this. It was just, you can't find it. So I, I really needed the clarification, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.